I'd like to welcome you all to the November fourteenth zoning board hearing. The first amount of business is we'd like to welcome a new member to the board, Charlie D'Antonio. Charlie, welcome. Charlie comes from a vast history on this board from many years ago, and it's a pleasure to have him back with us.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you, Charlie. Concerning the general business of the board, does anybody have any questions or comments before we start the first hearing?
Anyone have any conflicts tonight?
Okay. Do we have anybody, any type of conflicts coming tonight on any hearings? I know we have one with Brian, and I will stay consistent with this first hearing myself, and I'll step aside on this hearing. If not, then I'm going to turn this first hearing over, which is on the application of base state alternative health care. And Mary, you'll chair this, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sitting on this one will obviously be myself, Joe, John, Brian, and Mark. Any of you have any conflicts? Good. It's not quite seven oh five, so we'll just have to wait one more minute. And, oh, you've sent around the attendance?
Yes.
Good, alright. Watching paint dry. Okay, it being seven oh five, we'll open the meeting. The first applicant is, it's on the application of base state alternative health care of thirteen Highland Circle Suite Three Needham, Mass., for a special permit pursuant to section two point three of the zoning bylaw in order to permit the establishment of a medical marijuana treatment facility on the premises currently owned by Robert Karp of thirteen Highland Circle Suite Three Needham, Mass., located on Fortune Boulevard known and numbered four twenty-five Fortune Boulevard, and shown on the Milford Assessors Map thirty-two Block ninety-eight as lot sixteen. The petition for the special permit, number ten, says pursuant to what provisions of the zoning bylaw do you seek a special permit and for what purpose? Special permit is sought to cultivate and dispense medical marijuana at four twenty-five Fortune Boulevard. Explain the reasons you assert that. The special permit is sought, the special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The location is in compliance with the zoning bylaws. Also, no variance is needed as the location complies with all setbacks set forth in the zoning bylaws. The proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Delivery services are mandated by the mass DPH. Many of our patients will not be able to access our dispensary, therefore, we will deliver medicine to their residents. Our dispensary will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The location and use will not cause harm or hazards affecting health because the facility will be in compliance with state and federal laws regarding these concerns. Planning Board. Planning Board letter dated October sixteenth, twenty thirteen. Dear Board Members, the Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at its regularly scheduled meeting of November fifth and recommends the following unfavorable recommendations. See Town Planner Letter. Town Planner Letter. Dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests a special permit to establish a medical marijuana treatment center, MMTC, on the subject property. The proposal is for the MMTC to occupy the currently unoccupied second floor of the existing building with only internal alterations being necessary. The subject property complies with all of the requirements of the zoning amendment recently adopted at the May twentieth, twenty thirteen annual town meeting, including in particular two hundred-foot separation requirement from all protected uses. A copy of the text of the applicable MMTC amendment is attached for your convenience. All other zoning requirements appear to be met, including the special permit conditions of the section one point ten point one of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the zoning Board of Appeals. Larry Duncan, Town Planner. And the floor is yours.
My name is Stephen Carton. I'm an attorney. My partner is Robert Karp, the applicant. We are also enrolled agents with the IRS, and I'm also a full-time police officer, so I understand your concerns regarding this industry. Regarding this site that we are proposing, it's four twenty-five Fortune Boulevard, which is right here on the site plan map. This building is a separate lot from this building. If it was all in one area, then we would also need a variance. However, because this is a separate lot from this lot, no variance is required. A lot of people put a lot of time into these zoning bylaws. We've worked with numerous cities and towns across the state. So, out of respect for that, we try and find a location that meets the bylaws as opposed to coming in and asking for a variance, and this lot meets the bylaw requirements. Again, I said, you know, I'm a full-time police officer. We got a proposal from a national private security firm. They were here on Monday to give us a proposal. They gave us an estimate, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, which will cover and exceed the state's requirements for security at the facility. I'm open for any questions as far as the site plan and security. Bob can answer any questions as far as the operations.
Okay. First of all, is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on this applicant? Yes. Would you, sir, would you stand up and state your name and...
My name is Bob Hansarke.
Okay.
I'm just curious. I can't see the map from here. I can't see any lines. You pointed to a spot. I'd just like to know, which building is it? What was it occupied?
It's four twenty-five, so if you go Fortune Boulevard, right on the hill, take a left in the driveway, it's actually good, it's not right on the street, so you have to go up the driveway, down the driveway, and then back on the first floor, there is a computer repair company. This is on the second floor.
Which way am I going up Fortune Boulevard?
You know, I live in Norwood, so I'm kind of new to this area, but if you come off four ninety-five and you're at the lights and you take a left onto Fortune Boulevard, I hope that helps you. You go up the hill and it's on your left.
Is it beyond the Holiday Inn, or what used to be the Holiday Inn, or still is, maybe?
I can't answer that. I'm not exactly sure where the Holiday Inn is. It's right on the hill, either coming from the lights up the hill or going down the hill to the lights.
There's a set of lights going into the old brick store there, Lumbia. Is it beyond that or before?
Office bars.
Yeah. Okay, well, wait, if these guys are representing the company, they should be able to tell me. I shouldn't be hearing anything else.
Okay. When you come to the set of lights off four ninety-five, take a left, it's on the hill on the left, go in the driveway, you go up the hill in the driveway and then down the hill, it's set back probably up a hundred yards off the street.
I think what he'd like is more clarification. Is it on the side that Lowe's is on, or is it on the opposite side of Fortune Boulevard?
I believe it's on the opposite, but...
I believe it's on the opposite.
Yeah, I believe it's on the opposite.
Do you have any pictures? Do you have any, that's all you have is the map?
I have the map. I have, I also have a copy of the eighty-one P plan that was recorded at the registry. When the owner of this property bought it for Milton Cat, he filed the eighty-one P separating the two lots.
Okay.
I just, the space, I didn't, it's kind of bigger than this, I didn't, and I do have it, though.
Is there anyone else here?
What was there before?
It was an assembly company. They had, they manufactured something, I'm not really sure, but it's built out with electrical sockets coming out of the ceiling. It has pipe and gas that seem to drive some kind of industrial equipment.
It's been unoccupied for a couple of years.
I don't know if it clarifies it for this gentleman, but if you're driving on that street...
Ma'am, could you, could you stand and please state, state your name, please?
Wendy Frank, I live on Timber. If you're driving from, you did the stable checks at four ninety-five.
Yeah.
So if you're getting off at eighty-five and you make a left up that street, you'll see a sign that says four twenty-five Fortune on the right. It's past target, okay? Can you follow where I'm going?
Okay.
Past target, it'll say four twenty-five, and then there's, when you make a right there, you have a few hundred feet at least, maybe even a couple hundred yards of trees until you have a couple office buildings. If that helps at all.
Okay, does that, does that clarify that for you?
Sure.
Okay, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this? Okay. Board members? Mark?
Was this building Manhattan Software at one time?
I don't know. I think, I think it was.
Manhattan Software?
I think it was. I...
It's on the second floor?
Correct. I'm pretty sure I've seen that.
If you're looking at the building's second floor, it's on the left?
Yeah, I think, exactly. I'm pretty sure I saw that name played on the...
And to the right is the DES workforce.
Correct.
And downstairs is a couple of the companies.
Yes, yeah.
There's a lot of traffic going into that workforce area. Lot of foot traffic.
Yeah.
I went through the building the other day. Security-wise, I know you're a police officer, you must be aware of this.
Yeah.
Security-wise, it's just sheet rock. And the security that's being mentioned here is you're just going to build out more sheet rock and make it a little smaller, smaller rooms. Basically, as you know, and you've probably dealt with it as a police officer, you can just kick through the sheet rock to get in there. Or come up through the top, through the suspended ceiling.
The, the security proposal that we received, because it's on the second floor, there's nothing above it, there's a roof.
Right.
They will have motion detectors on the roof. Nobody's supposed to be on the roof.
No, that's true.
If they are on the roof for maintenance, we should arrange that ahead of time. If somebody's up there that is not required to be up there, the alarm company notifies the police department right away. Bob and I and any management team in the facility will be able to see the cameras through our smartphones if somebody's on there. We can call right away.
That would, I'm not, not to interrupt you, that would be a roof issue. What about the internal structure?
When you walk in, so you were there, so when you know that glass door on the left, every person that works there will have an access card that they swipe.
Right.
We are also putting in thumbprint ID pads for them to gain entrance. So, just in case somebody got a hold of somebody's card, they wouldn't be able to swipe and walk in. They'd have to identify themselves through their thumbprint. That was part of the proposal. That would be done for the front door on the left. Then the actual cultivation for this area is down that far hallway.
Yeah, that's the rear exit.
Right. That would be, the thumbprint ID would be down the hallway because there is the back door for the workforce place. You can't...
It's way down in the back on the left.
Yeah, yeah. So, our entrance to our cultivation facility would have the same entrance process where you swipe the card, thumbprint. The state's mandating that each of these facilities have two burglar alarms...
Right. Back up fifteen, five minutes back up.
That are tested monthly. Banks, banks have tested every six months. With this being a new interest, industry, they're pretty concerned, so they're doing it monthly. And rightfully so, that's, will meet all their requirements.
I guess back to my, my concerns, it's basically sheet rock.
I think it's cement block.
Cement block coming through the center from, on the second floor?
I'm sorry. From the corner of the...
Well, I'm talking, when you come in, as you know, when you come in from the front to the right, it's just, oh, you've got all glass in the front, which is, I assume that's what's going to be basic, is that going to be reinforced glass? I'm more concerned about the daily activity, not the nighttime activity. I'm not, I'm not so concerned about somebody breaking in and trying to rob the place.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned about the heavy flow of pedestrian traffic on that second floor to the right.
Again, a lot of these...
That's what I'm concerned about. That's my personal concern.
Yeah. They would, they wouldn't be able to gain access to the doors on the left without the proper identification. The cultivation is way down the hallway in the back.
Will that be separate?
Yes.
That will be secured separately?
Absolutely. Every door has to be, you know...
So basically, sheet rock's not...
There's no need for them to walk all the way down the hallway if they're going to the workforce, because when you get off the elevator or the stairs, the workforce is right there.
Right.
If they're walking down the hallway...
I'm just trying to make sure the security's separate. Dispensing is one thing. Cultivation and having eight hundred pounds of high-grade pot of marijuana sitting in one room can entice a lot of different individuals.
One of the things we ask for in the particular security proposal is the fact that we want total transparency. Anyone with any access to the internet or anyone with a smartphone, we'd be able to see twenty-four-seven what's going on in our place because we're going to post the IP addresses. That way, it'll be multiple eyes watching the place as opposed to just our security company.
And I told the security company, and we're actually meeting with the police infighting chief in a couple of weeks.
So that's already in the works?
Yes. We would like to share that IP address...
Chief Tooney and Chief Olafman?
Chief Olafman, yes. We would like to share that IP address with the police infighting department. Not that they have the time and the resources to have somebody sitting there watching it, but if they get a sense that something's going on that shouldn't be, we want to know just as much as we can, and we want to be a part of the solution.
Did you ask them for any input on the security part, on the security level, I should say?
I did, we haven't yet because the regulations are so strict, they think, they really cover everything. I mean, nothing is a hundred percent secure.
No, I agree with that.
Nothing. But you can take steps to make it as secure as possible, and we feel we've done that.
One last question, I'll let the board ask a bunch of questions. Is it possible, is it possible that that can have a separate entrance from the road? Is it possible? Is that something you considered, where if you're walking in, you go to the left, that's your facility. You go to the right, heavy traffic, the unemployment, et cetera, the workforce, there's a lot of people in there at any given time.
There are emergency exits in the back of that building.
No, I'm talking about entrances.
Yeah.
So it's, you're not, they can't, the workforce...
Right.
The DES workforce can't just come over and knock at your glasses, see what's going on.
We talked to the landlord about putting some kind of...
But the problem with that is if we turn that back entrance into a common entrance for our patients, these have to be handicapped accessible. On the second floor, there's only staircase. The front, the front door has...
Front is the only one with the elevator?
Correct.
Right.
The front door has the elevator. That would require installing, it would require a sufficient buildup for us, our hand or the...
Ultimately, my concern is the occupants of the building, not just your industry. And I'm sure that board members have quite a few questions in the same regard, so...
Sure.
That's all for me. I'm here.
Second floor accessible by elevator?
Yes.
It is. So there would be no monitoring people who get on the elevator to come to the second floor?
There'll be camera right outside the elevator. Everyone who walks out will have a picture taken.
Have you researched other, these types of businesses that are now coming up? And it seems to me that this type of business, and we've already granted a permit for one of these, that this type of business should be a self-contained type of business. Not, not a business in a building where other people are entering the building. It should be a business that's exclusive to the cultivation and the processing of the marijuana. For example, the other permit that we granted, the building is totally enclosed in fencing. Not just the perimeter of the building is enclosed in fencing. And with pedestrian traffic, as Mark said, coming into the building, I just don't feel that any type of security measures would be sufficient to limit accessibility to that second floor. And have you looked at the possibility of renting or buying property that you could run this business in exclusively in a building?
It's really difficult to find, and unfortunately, the timeframe is so narrow that this would be the best alternative. I understand your concerns about security, but the security system we're investing in, I find it very hard to believe that anyone will totally bypass it. There'll be multiple motion sensors, multiple cameras, little cameras our employees don't even know about. Also, it will have security, there will be a off-duty policeman. Steve is fortunate that his department does a lot of detail work. They will constantly be monitoring the property because obviously we're concerned on our patients and our employees.
So you're saying you're going to have a police officer on site at all times?
There'll be some kind of security. It may not be a police officer, but there'll be some kind of security on site twenty-four seven.
No other questions?
Okay. What's the square footage of the entire building?
The inside, the cultivation...
No, no, I want the entire building because I want to know what percentage of the building you people are encompassing.
Uh, roughly thirty-two thousand square feet.
Okay. And what, how much of that is?
Twenty-seven to twenty-eight thousand would be the cultivation, and then the office dispensary space is the additional four or five thousand.
Okay. But no, what I meant is what's the size of the entire building? Is it a four hundred thousand square foot, and you're in, do you have ten percent of the building? Do you have fifty percent?
We have approximately ninety percent.
You have ninety percent of the building?
I'm sorry, it's less. There's the workforce upstairs, and then there's a computer lab.
And there's a computer company now.
I'm going to say probably sixty percent. I apologize. I don't have the exact...
Well, I agree with the last two members. I, I've got real concerns with the security, and the potential is there because there are other businesses in there that it could, it could adversely affect them. This is not just a self-contained, where it's like your business encompasses the whole building, so I have concerns with, with the security as well. And on that, I'll, I'll let, Joe, comments?
No, no questions.
Okay. Brian?
So you're, you're going to be on the second floor of this building? Are you the only tenant on the second floor?
Is the work, if you come up the elevator, far the stairs, and here's the elevator, the office space that we would be leasing would be right here, then there's a long corridor in front of you that goes way back for the cultivation, and then the workforce building is on the right, workforce office.
Office, okay. Are there additional regulations under the Department of Public Health regulations on this for sites with multiple uses, as their colleagues were saying?
The security measures are the same whether it's a standalone building or whether it's a shared building. Obviously, you know, with the owner and the people in there, they're aware what's happening, they're, they're open to it, but the security measures are the same regardless if it's a standalone bed, building or a shared building, and, you know, it should give you some comfort knowing that they're the same. Because if they're the same for standalone and they're sufficient for the shared, you know what I'm saying, it's, it would be adequate for both.
That's all I had, Mary.
Okay. Anyone else on the board of anything more to add?
One more thing.
Go ahead.
We got into twenty-four on-site security, twenty-four hour, whether it's a police officer or, or being trained, or some security guy.
Contracted security.
Will it be armed?
No.
Will not be armed?
You cannot have...
Violent spread law.
Right, you can't have...
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, you can't have a firearm in the cultivation facility. We could possibly have one driving around in a, in a car at night.
Oh, that's fine. I'm just walking, certainly against pedestrian traffic and something happens during the day. I certainly wouldn't want that to happen.
No, yeah.
No joke, I'm sure.
Nope, nobody would.
One last question. Transporting this to persons who can, like, get the dispensary, is there a set amount, a maximum amount, I should say, that you'd be, say you're going out to five or six different individuals in one passing? I assume an unmarked vehicle, obviously.
Yes, there's, every person who gets a medical marijuana registration card is allowed up to five ounces per month.
So there won't be a major league amount, two individuals, I assume. I think, I believe the bar is two individuals have to...
Two years.
At all times.
And we would rather, we would rather do multiple deliveries than have that one vehicle full of medicine.
That's my question. And it's been answered.
It would be easier to do two or three than to reduce the risk of...
Lock toolbox cases will also have a combination lock on it, so it will not be easily accessible.
These are questions were asked of the other party that did this also.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay. Any other board members have anything to say? Okay, the last word is yours before we close the hearing, taken under advisement.
We appreciate your time. We understand your concerns about security. Steve, being a police officer, obviously is confronted with this on a daily basis. We've gone well above what the state has mandated because we believe that our workforce, obviously, is our greatest asset. The bottom line is if they're not protected, we're not protected. On top of that, our patients wouldn't come if they felt there was any kind of risk. We would like to do more delivery because it would give us a much greater marketing impact, so we're going to actually try to discount product that's delivered, because that way, instead of just having a regional area, we literally cover the whole state.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. We'll take it under advisement. We'll have a decision at the end of the evening. Thank you.
Okay, that being after seven-ten, this is on the application of TGI Fridays. If someone's representing TGI Fridays, would you step forward, please? I have a seat for a quick minute, sir, thank you. It's on the application of TGI Fridays, two forty, Fortune Boulevard, Milford, Mass., for special permit pursuant to section three point nine point one point three or other provisions of the zoning bylaw to establish an off-premise directional sign on town-owned land with the Cedar Street right-of-way of approximately six hundred and seventy feet north of the intersection of Cedar Street and Dilla on the west side of Cedar Street. Anybody have any conflicts on this particular application? If not, then we will have on the panel myself, Mary, Joe, John, and Brian. I'll put you on this one.
Mark.
One, two, three, four, five.
We have five.
Did you say Mike?
No. Brian's on this one.
Any conflicts with this?
Concerning the application that has been submitted, based on the question, please explain the reasons that you assert the special permit is in sought in harmony with the general purpose of the zoning bylaw. The application states an off-premise sign is allowed by special permit. Concerning the question is the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or pedestrian safety. The applicant states the proposed sign is for directional info and improve traffic and pedestrian safety. On the question, will the proposal use of the premises will not cause harm to enable it to create nuisance or hazardous affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public? The applicant states the proposed sign will not only assist in travel. The, we have a letter here from the chairman of the Planning Board. Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at the regular scheduled meeting of November fifth and recommends the following. Favorable recommendations, see Town Planner Letter. Town Planner Letter states the applicant requests a special permit to establish off-semit trailblazer directional sign within the right-of-way of Cedar Street. The general location is in front of one thirty-four Cedar Street to be visible to the southbound Motor Stunt Cedar. The sign will be on the west side of Cedar Street within the street right-of-way approximately six hundred and seventy feet north of the intersection of Cedar and Dilla Street. The sign will be located just to the north of the north leaning driveway of the gasoline service station at one thirty-four Cedar. The exact location would be coordinated with the highway survey. I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the zoning Board of Appeals. With that, that's all I have on the file, sir. Please state your name and tell us what you want to do. If you want to go to the microphone, that'd be great.
My name's Gene Ryan. I work for TGI Fridays. We are looking to get the last spot on the food sign on four ninety-five, and as in one of the three requirements, they need to put up a trailblazing sign because we are not directly with the other two food establishments, which are Wendy's and Pizza Eighty-Five, so we need a trailblazing sign pointing up Fortune Boulevard, and that's what we're applying for.
Okay. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this? Please stand and state your name, sir.
I'm sorry.
Welcome.
I just understand what is the trailblazing on four ninety-five. You have to explain a little bit, uh, four ninety-five has signs for food. Do you have a sign on that? Do you have a sign on that?
That's what we're applying for.
A four-ninety-five sign?
Correct.
Okay, well, what's this, we talk about what do you apply?
The highway department requires one trailblazing sign.
Which highway department?
The Mass Highway Department.
When you say a trailblazing sign, exactly what is that? What dimension is it?
It's three feet by three and a half feet. It's simply our logo with an arrow pointing up Fortune Boulevard.
Three feet by?
Three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet. Sign of all.
No, sir.
With an arrow.
Correct.
Having a sign on four-ninety-five, does it go up?
According to the Mass Highway Department, no. There's three requirements. And it's Milford property, so I had to apply.
Is that because you're off two eighty-five?
Because I'm off of Cedar Street.
Anybody else in the audience care to be heard? All right, for clarification, I have a colored aerial map here and I'd like you to identify to this board, can you come up here and tell me what, where this location of the sign is going to go based on the site plan?
So we get off four-ninety-five when we go up Cedar Street, and you know where the mobile gas station is?
Yes.
Right when you take a right into mobile gas station, it's that corner piece of property right there.
Can you show me on that?
Yes.
So I can let the audience know?
So this is off the highway.
This is the ramp?
This is mobile.
Yeah.
It would be right here.
Okay.
The original proposal was in front of Wendy's, but the planning board thought it was too close to the intersection to allow enough time to turn, so we backed it up a couple hundred feet.
For the sake of the audience and the people at home, including the board members, this highlighted yellow area, you see that? This is the ramp coming southbound of four-ninety-five. Taking a right on Cedar Street, this is the mobile station here. He's talking about the location of the sign right here in this corner. Right there.
All right, let me just speak again.
Okay? Now, since I made some clarification, is there anybody else that wanted to be heard on this? Do you want to hear again?
I'd like to be heard again. That's a pretty busy area. How high is that sign going to be off the ground?
That is something that the town will work in conjunction with the highway department. Right now, they're just trying to approve the spot. I don't know the exact height of the sign, that's something the town will work with the highway department. That's stated in part of the legislation.
Well, once you approve the spot, what recourse do we have as far as how high it's off the ground? I'm wondering, do you have a picture of coming off the ramp and what it would look like and how would it impact the safety of people coming out of mobile and would it block some of the other signs that are on that side?
It would be the same size as the other two food signs when you get off the highway, and it would not block any other signs. That's why we put it right on the corner, because there's already a few signs before that. Larry actually went down and checked the spot, which is how he came up with the verbatim. Larry thinks that's an appropriate spot.
Yeah.
There's the directional signs, the signs for lodging to the left. There's two lodging signs with arrows. It's going to be a sign exactly like that.
Are those three feet by three and a half feet?
Yes, there's two of them.
Board members, I'll start with on my left, Charlie, any comments? Brian?
This is, this is so that it doesn't replicate the situation every time I drive through Connecticut where the highway tells me McDonald's is this way and I get off and I can't find where it is because it's going to correct me anywhere else I know. So I would think this will help traffic. People get off, they can find the Friday's rather than.
Trying to go on four hundred and three roads when they get off the highway, I guess.
That's all.
Joe?
No question.
Mark?
I'm one of us.
You can discuss it, though.
I agree with Brian on that one.
John?
No.
No question, Eric?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, one more time.
I have a public hearing, but I have the right to speak as many times as I want. My question is, there's already two signs there for directions. TGI Fridays has a sign for directions. When does it stop?
That is the last available sign on the highway, unless they build more.
All right, there's quite, there's a lot of businesses up on Fortune Boulevard. It's an area, if you go a few more feet down the road, where there's five lanes of traffic going south. And I think it's a pretty tough area to begin with, and quite frankly, I don't think we should have any more signs there.
Concerning the, you're indicating that's the last spot availability, is that what you're indicating?
There's three spots taken, there's one spot open for food, and we're trying to secure that.
Is that something that you have to pay for?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. Annual fee is twelve hundred dollars, and it's going to cost us from start to finish about five thousand dollars to create the sign and have it installed. So five thousand to create it and install it, and twelve hundred a year goes to the Mass Highway Department to have it on their property.
And what happens if, if you decide to sell the store or the franchise? Whose responsibility is that going to be to take it down?
The, I would guess the highway department because they are installing it, but I don't want to speak on their behalf. But we are paying them to construct the sign, so I would anticipate that they would take it down.
And have you given them artwork on this yet?
No, not without approval. We're waiting for approval because it's going to cost money to design it. But they do have their own company that constructs the signs, so we can't even outsource it. We go by their rules.
But currently, right now, under supposedly this agreement that you pay to put it up, however, you don't pay to take it down?
That was not discussed, I don't have any idea. But we are, yeah, we are paying them to construct it.
Do you have another question?
Yes, I do. You asked a question about artwork. This is a request they're asking from the town of Milford. Should the town of Milford know what the artwork looks like?
That's what I was getting to.
Number two, I can understand they're making a payment to the state highway department to be on four-ninety-five, but this sign is going to be on Milford property. Should the town of Milford be giving a payment?
I can't answer that.
No, but I mean, what the hell, you're on Milford property, so why should they be paying Milford for the sign? It's an off-premise sign. It's not their property, it's the town of Milford's property.
The sign is, the, the, the construction of a sign is simply going to be a Friday's logo that says open till one a.m. That's it. Very basic, very simple. It's going to have an arrow underneath it.
And what is there now? That's currently there?
Pizza Eighty-Five, Wendy's, and I think the Clarion is on there because they serve food.
I'm a little confused, that Pizza Eighty-Five and Clarion, that's on four-ninety-five? It's not on Route Eighty-Five.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's.
I need clarity here.
Pizza Eighty-Five, Wendy's, and Clarion is on four-ninety-five.
Correct.
And when you get off four-ninety-five, all three of those have trailblazing signs, and we're just looking to get the last spot.
And that location is exactly where you indicated it was currently?
It is, uh, their signs are about two-hundred feet before that one. And as he said before, we didn't want to congest that spot, so we just went a little bit further down.
Can you show me on this site plan where their signs are located?
Yes.
Just for clarity?
Yep.
That's the ramp coming.
There's, uh, you have the hotel ones about here, and then the food ones are here. And then these are the, the traffic signs that show arrows that, you know, those type of arrows.
So you're telling me there's three different signs here?
Yeah, because these food signs are pointing this way. Ours is going to have to point that way.
You know, I go by that site two, three times a week, four times, maybe five times. I don't recall. I know the sign on four-ninety-five.
Right.
I know the sign coming down the ramp, yes, on arrow signs, but I don't know of any signs on Route Eighty-Five.
Okay.
For that reason, I'd like to have this board vote against it because I'd like to have better clarification.
Okay, just for clarity for the audience, and I'm confused myself, and I'm clearly going to need some clarity as well. But there apparently are three different signs here, and now there's going to be a I just wanted everybody to realize that, what these, where these locations are. Those circles, there's already three there.
Okay.
Could be a casino one coming on, just don't know. Any other comments from the board? If not, you have the final word before we take it under advisement. Close the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing is closed. Yeah, you can wait till the end of the meeting, we'll render our decision. Go back to the file, go. Let me give you a sheet. Okay, this next application is on the application of Milford Nissan. Any board members have conflicts on this one? John, you okay, too? Y'all set? Okay. All right, on this panel, it would be myself, Mary, Joe, full-time. We'll take this one and we'll switch this one to Mark. What's the next one? This is, okay. Is the, is the representative for Milford Nissan here tonight? Please come on up to the front. This is on the application of Milford Nissan Corporation, three-twenty East Main Street, Milford, Mass, for a special permit pursuant to section two-point-three or other related provisions of the zoning bylaw in order to utilize the premises at one-forty-eight dash one-fifty East Main Street, Milford, between Hamilton Avenue and Free Street for the purposes of display of vehicles for the sale of Milford Nissan. In addition, we leave this sought in the form of a special permit under section three-point-nine or other applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw to prevent an off-premise directional sign to be established upon the premises. Put that there. Yeah, we have an amended, we have an amended one as well. So I'm going to have to read from the amended one. Okay, from the indication of the applicant, explain the reasons you assert the special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The use that I seek is the same as the exact use of the site that formerly been a part of Imperial Chevrolet, is that correct? Okay. Concerning on the question, the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic or congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The applicant states we'll have a vehicle display and I expect some traffic may exit onto Free Street or Hamilton Street to look closer at our display, and it should not impair pedestrian safety or create undue traffic. Upon the question, did the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to this neighborhood or create nuisance or hazardous effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public? The applicant states it doesn't anticipate any hazard of any kind with this use or this site. Concerning the letter addressed to the planning board, they reviewed this on November fifth and recommends the following, which is a favorable recommendation, see town planner letter. The town planner letter states the applicant requests a special permit to establish a motor vehicle display lot on the subject premises. The request is also to be utilized in the existing freestanding sign structure as an off-premise sign. The property will serve as an overflow display lot for Milford Nissan's dealership, which primary location is at three-twenty Main Street. The subject property has previously been utilized for similar purposes several years ago. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. It should be noted that site plan approval will be necessary by the planning board to confirm the total number of unregistered vehicles allowed on the property and that arrangement of the same on the property, as well as the position of adequate off-street parking. With that, I do have a letter in the file addressed to the zoning board. This is from Rick Enneritz. He's the owner of one-sixty-eight East Main Street and received a notice sent to the abutters. This is to advise you that I have no objection to allowing other property owners to use their land in any way they see fit. Please approve the applicant's request. And he is from North Borough. With that, sir, I will turn the hearing over to you.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jeff Batta, I'm the owner of Milford Nissan. I have some handouts, if you will. And the top sheet basically shows what I would like to have on the sign. There's an existing eight-foot by eight-foot sign face that's there. It's actually empty at the moment, right in the center of the site. And the second page shows the location of Hamilton Street and Free Street, where the lot is basically right in between the two. Let me show us. And it's the way I always tend to go the other way. In any event, this is the subject location. There is a sign pole right basically in the middle. It is considered one-forty-eight, one-fifty East Main, but the sign post is right in the center. The front page again shows what we wanted to have on the sign. And then about three-quarters of the way back, there are two light poles. The display will only go back as far as those light poles. The residents of this house, it would still leave them probably parking for twenty cars, and I think there's three cars parked there currently. It also would allow, if anybody wanted to stop and look at our display, they could drive down Hamilton, pull in, you know, safely park back there and look at the display of vehicles, exit back out onto Free Street if they so choose. If they came in from Free Street, they could also, there's a curb cut on both sides, so the access is very easy from either street. And basically, we've just outgrown our existing location. I want an additional display and storage of vehicles on that site. We'll only occupy probably about sixty percent of the existing, it's all asphalt, well paved right now. It's formerly Imperial and Dick was only Chevrolet before that, so it's been used for this purpose for, I think, thirty years. It's currently vacant.
Any questions from the audience? I just have a quick question before I turn it over to board members. Is this the number of vehicles that you're going to be putting on? What do these blocks represent?
They basically represent vehicles. Again, as a display, now there may be a time in the winter when I have to, you know, tighten them up a little bit. I anticipate, I think I have it drawn for twenty-one. They will, they will all be new vehicles, I might also add. And, you know, I see it maybe being thirty. I spoke to the people in Imperial at one time, they used to store seventy-five on that site, but that went all the way back as well. I'm only going to be utilizing, like I said, about sixty percent of the site.
So you're asking for twenty-one right now?
Well, that's the way I drew it today. I think I can, I'd like to ask for thirty, but I think, once we start laying them out, I would know better. I don't anticipate any more than thirty.
Okay. Okay. Board members, Mark, I'll start with you.
I don't have any questions.
John?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Mr. Batta, lucky for you, I'm a resident of Hamilton Street. And since the new municipal car business has moved in there, I can tell you that there's a major problem on Hamilton Street. And now with your vehicles being there, I can only see that being worse in that if I were to be traveling from sixteen and one-oh-nine, and I was to take a right onto Hamilton, knowing that that's a one-way street.
Right.
And people exiting the lots now, both from the municipal business, and I'm sure it'll happen from your lot, that they'll jump out back onto sixteen right there because it's only maybe forty feet. That's a major problem. And I, I need to know somehow, some way, how you can alleviate that from happening.
Well, as I said, the back of the property, there would be a pretty wide driveway there, approximately, I'd say forty feet wide from the back of our cars until, you know, to this house. So again, as you know, there's no real curb cut. I mean, the pavement on that lot is, is level. There is a curb on the Free Street side with a curb cut right back by the house. My anticipation is we would, you know, park the cars all the way down, and then people could, you know, pull in here, and they would, I would assume, pull in to the left and to exit. Most cases, I think they would drive straight ahead, make a left onto Free Street, come back up to Route sixteen, rather than back out, you know, in reverse onto Hamilton Street. I kind of anticipate the flow of traffic to, you know, to go.
What can you do to encourage that?
I could put signage up if that. I could put signage up if that, you know...
Would you be willing to put signage up, no exit onto Hamilton?
Right, I could do that. I know that there is one-way street sign there, but it's almost up by Route 16, so in the back section of the lot, it's probably 75 feet back. You know, I think if people looked right at it, it'd be one thing, but they have to look up almost to Route 16 to see the one-way sign.
There'll really be nobody from your business there to monitor this at all.
No, it's gonna be an unmanned site, we're going to have signage, a small signage on the cars.
From what I can see, there'll be free flow in and out of there, and people will go wherever they wanna go unless there's measures taken to make them exit the proper way.
Maybe on those two light poles that are already in the ground, I could probably put a one-way sign on those two. Alternatively, there's another light post back here, which is a telephone pole. I could put, I could put as many as three of them up, right on the site, I don't see that being a problem whatsoever. The other thing is, with Mark Rosoli's permission, I might be able to paint directional arrows in yellow on the asphalt, that might be, that might be more, I think that might be more beneficial myself. I understand your point, I was down there today looking at it, and I said, you know, I'd be honest with you, I didn't realize that Hamilton was a one-way street. With Imperial kind of taking up all that, that whole section for such a long time, I just never really thought about it, but I could put three signs up, that's not a problem. Or if you prefer, I would paint the asphalt with a directional arrow.
Could there be some way to do it so you wouldn't have access from Hamilton, or not as much access, like some type of fencing, or some type of obstruction, maybe not fencing, so that they'd have to access it more? It would kind of, you know...
Sure, no, that's a good point, I mean, on Rosoli, who'll be the landlord, if I could carry the display back this way, and I think he wants to leave this area open for the tenants of the house, I think there's three or four people that have cars that park there. He's very amenable to whatever I need, and obviously whatever, you know, you mandate that we do, and I think that would definitely solve that problem, if I just carried the display down that way, and then kind of cut it off the telephone pole, that still leaves plenty of room for the Free Street residents to park, it's actually right next to their house anyway, I mean...
Because I know that, you know, a lot of people don't know that's a one-way, and that, like I said, that could be...
Yeah, I think that's a much better solution.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board? If not, you have the last word before we take it under advisement.
Well, thank you for your consideration. We've had very good success in Milford so far, improving this, and hopefully a good future for us, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's up to you. If not, you certainly can call the legal department tomorrow and get the decision, you don't have to stick around for it. Okay. Thank you. Mark? We'll notify you, you can get ahold of town council tomorrow, he'll give you the conditions.
Thank you very much.
Mark, can you pull that site plan off for me, I need it back for the file? Next on the agenda is Green Street Auto Spa. Can those representatives please step forward? Any board members have a conflict on this hearing? If not, it will be the full-time members, again, and this time, Charlie, you'll join us. Okay. On the application of Green Street Auto Spa Inc. of 39 Green Street, Milford, Mass., for special permit pursuant to Section 2.3 and other relevant provisions of the Milford zoning bylaw in relation to 1.5 acre parcel, more or less, of land located on the northeast intersection of Green Street and Cape Road, a special permit is sought to utilize the premises currently utilized as a commercial car wash facility, for the additional purposes of oil changes and related automotive services ancillary and incidental to the current use of the car wash facility. Concerning the application, explains the reasons that you assert that the special permit is sought in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, if this is, can we dispense with the reading exactly as it appears in the application?
As it appears, actually.
I have no objection.
Okay.
No objection, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fine, okay, thank you. You'll give us that background as soon as I can read the letters of, from the planning board. They reviewed the petition of November 5th and recommends the favorable recommendation of the permit to go to the property, not the proprietorcy town planner letter. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to reestablish the prior car wash use on the subject property. In addition to the car wash, the auto servicing, detailing, and oil changes uses would be also reestablished in the facility. The cumulative off-street parking requirements can be met, and all the other zoning requirements appear to be satisfied. There'll be no vehicle sales on the premises at this time, therefore I recommend a favorable report to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. Site plan approval will be required from the planning board if the special permit is granted. With that, Attorney Pettenari, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I'm Ernie Pettenari, and I've got an office here in Milford at 12 Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, who is Barry DeRusso, who runs the Green Street Auto Spa Inc., and also on behalf of the landlord, which is Makepar Corporation of Hope Dale. This petition is somewhat repetitive of other petitions that have appeared before your honorable board over the last 20 or 30 years. This is the car wash facility that's located at 39 Green Street, and I have to make one correction to the record. Larry's letter talks about a request for a special permit to resume the car wash facility, that's not necessary, because back about 15 years ago, when Makepar bought this property, the zoning board sitting at that time agreed that the car wash special permit would run with the land and not be, need to be renewed. However, there is now the requirement in the bylaw that the ancillary services, such as oil changes, et cetera, require a special, separate, special permit to be issued by this board. What we're here tonight to do is to ask your board for your favorable action on Mr. DeRusso's application, so that he can restore the auto oil change, auto service and oil change components to the business that's been run on this property continuously for the last 25 or 30 years. By way of history, this is the former Sherman's Pontiac facility, which has been on this property for almost 60-something years, and has been used for automotive sales and services in an uninterrupted way all that time. Since Makepar's owned the property, they've had one other tenant on the property who recently vacated, and now Mr. DeRusso has come in, he's made a substantial investment in the property, he's renovated it and rehabbed the mechanical components of the building. Mr. DeRusso has extensive experience in the car wash business, he's operated successful car washes in other areas as close as Uxbridge, and he comes in with a long line of experience and success in the business. We just need to come before you this evening and ask you for your, please, your consideration, so that he can also offer the oil changes. There's nothing different that's gonna happen on this site if the permit is issued than what's been going on on that site for the last 15 or 20 years, and he doesn't intend to do it in any different way by means of intensity, or hours of operation, or anything like that. You might have noticed, the building has been significantly renovated, the pavement has been upgraded, the striping and pavement, et cetera, has been redone to conform to the 2008 special permit and site plan review that was done. And it's our expectation that if this board votes favorably on this application, we will ask the planning board to issue a waiver of site plan review, because nothing's changed there either. We're here to answer any questions you have about the way he operates his business, or about the petition in more specific detail, but I'd rest on that at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Anybody in the audience can be heard? If that, if not, I'll turn it over to board members, Charlie?
Yeah, Attorney Pettenari. The intensity of use of the site is going to be pretty much what it is right now?
I would expect it to be identical, Mr. D'Antonio, yes.
Okay, and what, right now, it's used as a car wash?
Correct. And the former tenant had a Class II license and the special permit for oil changes to be done on the property.
But they haven't been done for a period of time, is that correct?
The tenant has been vacated for about three or four months while Mr. DeRusso has been rehabbing.
So basically, there is going to be no substantial change to the traffic patterns or anything else getting in and out of this business, and the intensity of use?
Correct. And it will conform in every respect to the site plan, which was approved in 2000, that's correct.
Not that this matters, I was on the board that gave the car wash their approval.
See, I remember that.
That was a long time ago.
We're starting to evade ourselves now, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. Brian? Joe?
I think recently, the previous tenants received a permit to advertise and sell used automobiles.
They did. Mr. DeRusso does not want that.
That doesn't go with it, that went with the tenant anyway, I believe, yeah.
That would require a separate special permit and a Class II license from the board of selectmen.
They're only gonna do oil changes, are they gonna do small repairs?
No auto repair at all. It's strictly tire replacement, oil changes, transmission fluid, it's all the fluid aspects of, no brake jobs, no new tires, no...
No motor jobs? No motor jobs?
No, there's no mechanical work to be done on that.
Okay. And the hours of operation will be the same as what the car wash is open?
Same as what the car wash is, yeah.
Okay, so like you won't be doing, you won't have the car wash closed, and you'll be doing oil changes, and, okay, so that'll, everything will be open?
It's actually probably gonna be have less hours than the car wash, car wash is eight to six, so.
All right.
It'll be in that time.
Okay.
John?
No question.
Mark?
Again, back on what Mary said, if you're having a rainstorm, the car wash normally isn't open, will you still be open for oil services?
For oil services, yes.
Fluid change services?
It changes after the car wash, even though it's raining, we're probably still in there, and if someone pulls in, because that's when you do all your maintenance, is when on rainy days, so.
So basically, it's set hours every day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I really don't have any questions. Clearly, we'll have a condition in there that none of this will take place outside of the garage area, the oil change area, you'll be fine with that. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, we'll close the hearing, take it under advisement. You have the last words, sir?
Again, I appreciate your time this evening, and we're asking for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, we'll close the hearing. Next is Cornerstone at Milford, 11 Birch Street. It's on the application of Cornerstone of Milford Assisted Living Facility. This is located at 30 Attrissiot Road, New Ichwood, New Hampshire, for a variance from the sign requirements from Section 3.9 of the zoning bylaws, related to the facility at the intersection of Birch and Medway Road, Milford, on the assessed map 43, Lot 61 and 61B. The variance is sought to permit the establishment of freestanding sign of greater than otherwise permitted under the relevant positions of the zoning bylaw. Anybody have a conflict on this hearing?
No.
If not, it'll be the full-time members, and Brian, please. Concerning the application, they're actually going down the road of what circumstances exist relative to the conditions and shape and topography of the premises?
If it's...
As long as it's the same?
Can we dispense with the reading if it's...
No objection. With that, there's been a motion to dispense with the reading, as long as it's not substantially different than what's being presented in front of us, all of the favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, I suppose no? That's motion to adjourn, Mr. Pettenari, I will read the letter from the town planner quickly. Basically, the November 5th meeting recommends the following, it's a favorable recommendation from town planner, and according to town planner, the applicant requested a freestanding double-phase sign approximately 36 square feet in an area of approximately 10 feet in overall height, and is shown on an attached graphic. The maximum area permitted in the residential zone is nine square feet. The proposed sign is located near the intersections of Birch and Medway Streets and is being perpendicular to Medway Street as well, also on the attached site plan. The sign location will not interfere with the visibility as it is outside the 20-foot clear site triangle as first mentioned in Section 2.4.6. In addition, the sign is that the proposed location is not considered a site obstruction, according to ZBL Section 2.4.7, because the Birch and Medway Street intersection is signalized. Therefore, I recommend a favorable recommendation be forwarded off to the zoning board of appeals. And with that, Mr. Pettenari, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Ernie Pettenari, my law office in Milford is at 12 Main Street. I'm here tonight representing the Cornerstone Assisted Living Facility, which is, as you know, the facility that's presently being constructed at the corner of Birch Street and Medway Street in Milford. A little bit of history about the site. About a year ago, we received a special permit from the planning board, which is necessary under the zoning bylaw to authorize the construction, development, and use of the property for assisted living. One of the components of that special permit and site plan review that was conducted in October of last year was that we left open the question of signage. And the reason we did that was because we knew that we wanted to consult with people who would be involved in the deployment of the sign, the design of the sign, et cetera, and within the last six or eight weeks, we've had site visits and meetings with the building commissioner and with the town planner, Mr. Duncan, and they selected the location of the sign in approximately the same location as the temporary sign had been constructed during the development part of the process. The reason that we're here tonight is because the sign, which is shown in this rendering here, which I have appended to your memorandum this evening, is approximately 36 feet in size per side. And because the frontage of this property is located in the residential zone, the maximum sign size in the residential zone is nine square feet. We have a sign which in configuration like this one is approximately 36 feet per side, total signage would be about 70 feet, consequently, we need a variance. What we're asking the board tonight to do is to approve the sign in terms of the concept of the design and the location, so that we can proceed with the final placement of the sign, which would be the last piece of the approval processes that started over a year ago. Parenthetically, if you have an opportunity, in fact, anybody in the audience, if you have an opportunity to stop in and just take a look around, because it really did come out very, very nicely. The facility is a beautiful facility, I'm very proud to be associated with them, and frankly, the sign variance is something we knew we would have to come in, and the design of the sign was done in a way to make it compatible with everything in the neighborhood and a perfect complement to the development. By way of qualification relative to whether or not there is need for a variance, statutorily, I think you, gentlemen and ladies, understand, there are certain statutory requirements which have to be fulfilled. The reality of this particular site is that without a variance, there can be no signage. This is a unique piece of property in the Medway Road corridor, it's one of the last remaining completely residential frontages left in the Medway Road corridor, and we believe that the grant of this variance to allow the sign in this configuration is relatively insignificant and benign. Again, I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have, but that would be the gist of my presentation.
Great, thank you. Anybody in the audience can be heard? Yes, stand up, please state your name.
Overall, the plan shows it being about five and a half feet tall from ground to the top of the post.
Could someone close these two drawers for me, please, thank you. Anybody else? Sure, go ahead. You have a question, sir, please stand up, state your name.
Hi, Mike Moran, I live on East 8th Street in Milford, and I would just like to voice my objections to the sign.
Excuse me, someone speaking? Go ahead.
The building itself is so large and immense that I don't think we need to call any more attention to it. I've lived in that neighborhood, it's a residential neighborhood to me, not a commercial. Property owners bought the property, no one with his own restrictions were, they would rent the special permit to build their facility, they should have been aware at that time. And I just don't think a sign that large is conducive to the area. Again, I think the building speaks for itself, there's no reason to make any more.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, miss, please state your name.
Wendy Frank, I'm also one of the people on that street. You said this is 36 feet?
This is approximately six by six, 36 square feet.
Square feet?
Okay.
Square feet.
Okay, okay, perfect, all right, all right.
Anybody else in the audience care to be heard on this?
I would just like to bring the gentleman over there.
Okay, board members, Mark?
Thirty-six square feet, six by six, is it all that? It is a big building, and it's quite noticeable, but I have no questions regarding the site itself, I obviously, I'm pretty sure the size and where it's going to be located. Leave the questions up to fellow members.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in here?
Sure, go ahead.
One of the things I want to make sure that we don't leave unanswered is the notion of whether or not this is a surprise. There's no surprise to the idea that there was the necessity for a sign to be included with the facility once the facility was developed. The reason that the question of the sign was left open was because the design and placement of that sign was something that the developer and the town had agreed they would come back and revisit. In terms of what is being proposed this evening, it is comparable to the temporary sign, which is currently on that facility and which has been there since the commencement of the development, and is located in a nearly identical position to that sign. So in terms of how much it's going to jar the eye relative to people going up and down the Route 109 thoroughfare, it isn't going to be of any more significant impact than the temporary sign that's been there now, and it certainly isn't a matter that was kept private for any other reason other than there was decisions that had to be made.
Mary? Mike?
If I'm not mistaken, we didn't get a chance to vote on that side, so I don't see all that public. I would also like to mention that the business you're in isn't dependent on advertising on the street. You're in the.
Michael, address everything to the board, once you're done with your questions, he can answer them if that's the case.
So, again, I don't see how his business is dependent on a big flashy sign. I would think his property is more of a destination that people in need of those healthcare services already know they go into that destination without needing a sign to advertise that they're there.
Okay.
I want to be clear, this is not an advertising sign, this is not a flashy sign. This is a sign so that when people who are visiting their relatives and friends and loved ones who are residents of the facility and they get off of 495, drive up 109, they see the sign, they pull in and they have their visit. There's nothing overwhelmingly stimulating about this sign, it's a very modest sign, and again, in fact, it's going to be nearly identical in size to the sign that's been on that site since the development started.
Yes, your name, please?
June Hennessy, Redwoods. So, the sign that has been there, that was temporary, that was now, as of this morning, leaning against the building, in the front of the building by the main door, that's the size of the, this sign.
Actually, this looks smaller.
I don't know, I'm not going to say it's exactly the same, it's comparable, sir.
Because that was quite large, I thought.
Okay. Anybody else? Board members? John?
Attorney Cattanari, could you basically show me again where that placement of that sign is as you come off Medway Road? Is it right on the corner of Birch?
It's right on the corner, it's outside the triangle that is reserved for the sight lines relative to the signalized intersection, but it's within the property line, it's not off-site, it's not off-premise, and it's right there. Someone asked a question if it was going to be on a wall, the answer is, this is just intended to illustrate the footings that are going to be under the sign, it's not going to be on a wall.
Mary? No, I'm outside.
Bill?
No, no questions.
Brian? No, thank you.
Bill? Yes?
Wendy Frank, I'm sorry if you said this, is the sign on an angle on the corner so that it's not quite facing Medway and it's not quite facing Birch, is it on an angle so that?
You know, I don't know how to answer that question.
All right, here's the corner, and is the sign like?
The sign is almost perpendicular to the curving. Does that answer your question? I don't know how else to answer it. The curving runs this way, the sign runs that way.
So, is the sign going to be where the temporary sign was? Is it going to be facing in the same position?
Approximately, yes.
As the other sign?
Yes, yep.
That, that was a little.
And just for clarification for everyone, including the audience, the amount, please, please tell us what's allowed in the zone under the residential side of square footage of area of sign versus what you're proposing, so everybody's clear.
The maximum signage allowed in the residential zone would be nine square feet, which would be three feet, by three feet, one side. The sign we are proposing is approximately 35 and a half feet per side, so in terms of area, it's about 35 feet and it's got writing on both sides.
Square feet.
Square feet.
Square feet. And Maria's Restaurant, I believe, is on the other side of the street, and they've got a pole sign.
Well, they've got a pylon sign that's got to be about 80 or 90 square feet on each side here.
If, yes?
I have no objection to a permitted size sign as opposed to this size.
With that, you have the, go ahead, Mark.
Will the sign be illuminated?
The sign will have soft floodlights from the bottom.
From the bottom up?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then you have the last, last.
We believe that the sign is a reasonably anticipated and integral part of the development that's gone on on that site for the last year. We believe it's a reasonable request and it's a reasonable ancillary provision for the construction, and we hope you will agree. Thank you.
Great, okay, we'll take the, we'll close the hearing and take it under advisement. Mark, you, can someone pass me down that site plan, please? The next hearing and last hearing for the night, this is the Woodland School Building Committee. Those that are involved can please step forward. By the way, is there any, any conflicts on this board? Okay, Brian's out.
I am, okay.
You do? Mark, John, you okay? You okay on this?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm fine.
Good, I just want to make sure. This is on the application of the town of Milford acting by and through its Woodland School Building Committee for a variance from the provisions of Section 2.3, 2.4, and 2.5 of the zoning bylaws. Of those provisions, provisions relate to a parcel of land located on the North Vine Street in Milford, which is currently the site and utilized for the Woodland School. The variance release is sought to permit the demolition of the existing building and related site features, and a construction of the new building with new and reconfigured site features notwithstanding setback, separation, or height requirements to the aforementioned provisions of the zoning bylaws. We have the applicant, who is going to be representing, are you going to be holding the representative?
I'm going to ask the architect to do the explanation.
Make the presentation, okay?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what we're here for this evening is, as the chairman outlined, a proposed construction of a new facility on the existing facility, and the building will be a three-story building as opposed to the one and, one and a half story building that is presently exists. We are going to seek relief with regards to the overall height of the building, and we'll need the board's consideration for us to proceed with the design as we're progressing accordingly.
Okay, with that, with that, Mr. Cheeky, let me finish reading the recommendations from, of course, the planning board and town planner, before I turn the entire hearing over to you for, for explanation. By the way, on this particular hearing, this will be the full-time members, and Mark, I think you're up on this one, okay?
Good.
This, this particular variance, it's going to be under the section, again, 2.3, note 11, and section 2.5 for the height requirements, and they have an attachment here that will be discussed. And then we also have a letter from the, made to the zoning board. The planning board did review the petition listed on the November 5th meeting, and recommends a favorable recommendation, the town planner, the town planner letter, which the applicant requested variance to construct a new 132,000 square foot, three-story school facility on the subject property, two and a half story, which is a 35-minute maximum height permitted in the RB residential zone. The three-story building will be 60 feet in height, with skylights extending to about 70 feet. The existing school is to be razed. In addition to the height variance, the variance is also requested from the 100-foot setback to the abiding residential zone or utilized land for activity areas associated with the school use and per zoning bylaws, Section 2.3, with a footnote of 11. Portions of the various play areas and athletic fields are proposed to be within a 100-foot setback. Given the many environmental constraints associated with the site, maintaining the full 100-foot setback would severely limit a reasonable use of the property. Therefore, we recommend a report to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. And with that, the floor is yours, please introduce yourself and give us an idea of what you're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the lead architect, Laura Wernick, to explain what we're attempting to do.
Does the audience concede this plan, by the way? If you can, hopefully the TV community can as well? Perfect, okay. The microphone is wireless, so if you need to pick up and move around, you can do that.
Thank you. I'm Laura Wernick with HMFH Architects. We've been working with the school department on this project for quite a while now, and you all know this is a significant project for the town. It's being done in conjunction with this, 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 this funding, well over half of the cost of the project. This is also a project that's part of the school department's long-range plan, and finally, the long-range plan will be allowed to, is going forward, and the plan consolidates the fifth grade with the existing third and fourth grade on the school, on the, on the property in a new school building. As part of the requirements for the state's participation in this, a very extensive analysis had been done of any possible other sites in the town, and after that thorough investigation was determined that this is the best site, and the appropriate site for, for the school in the town. That being said, there are restrictions that exist on the site, primarily those of the wetlands on the site. We've got to see the conservation commission, through extension, established by, in agreement with the conservation commission. The project site, as now delineated due to the wetlands, provides us with a three-story building, it'll be a wonderful new facility for the children with one grade level per floor. It will take the place of the existing school, which now no longer meets the educational requirements of the town. So the building, as stated in the application, will be, the top of the roof will be no more than 60 feet, there will be skylights that could extend up to 70 feet, we don't think there'll be that much, that's the most it could possibly be. So that is beyond the 35-foot height limit of the, of the current code, and also the 100-foot buffer zones or upper limits. But what we've shown on the plan, which I think we have in your package, is the, I'll show you here, in the existing building.
I don't have that.
This is the existing site, and very much as in the proposed site, there are play spaces and parking areas that extend into the 100-foot buffer zone, so that, in terms of that buffer zone, it really is very comparable to what, to the existing condition. We have.
I thought it was me.
There we go, okay. So, right now.
That looks much better.
Yeah. It's starting to make more sense now.
It's amazing what 180 degrees can do. So, right now, there are, you can see the dash line, which is 100-foot line, and there is, there are, there's a parking lot that is within that 100-foot, and there are also play spaces that are within that 100-foot zone, and that is very comparable to what the future, what the proposed condition is as well.
Are these copies for us?
There are extra copies here, yeah. This is, I think you already have that in your package.
Okay, I do want to, I do want to read into the records for clarity that the, when the, and this is part of the application, it was actually underneath the, the original application, when, when the questions were asked, what circumstances existed relating to the soil conditions, shape, and photography of the site, which don't, not generally affect the land in the zoning district. The applicant basically states that all of the site is a large 22 acres, space for a placement of a new school and its associated site features is constricted by the existence of the wetlands, the detention ponds, the topography in the existing school building, and its associated site features which must remain in the operation during construction. Concerning the, the construction, if the variance were not granted, what hardship would the circumstances be described of considering above? And the applicant states, the construction of a replacement school in the site for the given enrollment would not be feasible, the money the town of Milford has spent on the feasibility study would be wasted, as the study showed there are no feasible alternative sites, and the town would possibly forfeit the MSBA reimbursements of 25 to 30 million without constructing a new three to five elementary school the town cannot comply with, the school department's long-range education plan. And then on the application, on the question that the state, would you feel that the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good? The applicant states, this is a public school which provides an amenity for all residents of the town, the proposed uses on the site are consistent with the uses that were established with the existing school since 1977. The proposed structures and activity areas approved to the site are located at similar distances from the lot lines and exist today. The portions of the proposed structure, however, which are higher than 35 feet, are at a substantial distance from the abiding properties. So, that throws a little bit more clarification on it for the board members, and if there's anything addition you'd like to add, please do so. Anybody have a copy of this?
The intent is always to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for the children by keeping the school away from the existing building during, having the construction away from the existing building, that assures that the optimal safety for the kids, it assures the best educational environment for the children, and then protecting the wetlands obviously is a benefit for the community as well.
Great, thank you. Anybody in the audience care to be heard? Yes, sir?
My name is Dan Nero, I live across the street from the current Woodland School. I haven't heard why we need a three-story, 70-foot school. Let somebody address that, please. 70 feet near, yeah.
It's a three-story high school, again, because of the area allowed to us on the site. Right now, the existing building is locked up here, there are wetlands which run across the building, this whole dark area here is wetlands, so in order to fit parking and bus stop off and here, we're really restricted having a school in this building. In order to fit within that area, to fit the number of students, it has to be stacked in three stories.
Three grades.
Three grades, and so there'll be third, fourth, and fifth grade, one per floor, that requires a three-story.
Listen, Chairman, you asked the question in the beginning of each of the other presentations this evening, are there any conflicts of interest? I don't suppose that I'm going to cause anybody here to vote against this, but I would say, the people that appoint you are the people that want to build the school, a three-story, 70 feet high, in a residential area where there is nothing higher than 20 feet. feet. So I would ask, I'm not going to change anybody's mind here. I, I, I'm sure of that. But recognize, this didn't have to be built either here nor the size of that building. That was the total control of the school board. They said, "We want to change something. We want to distort, demolish the current building, and we want to build a seventy-feet-high building next to my home." See, I, I think I heard this lady say, "It isn't going to be close to the, uh, the other properties." It's, I live there. It's within twenty feet of the other properties. The hundred, we're going to reduce the hundred-foot buffer for hundreds of children. For what purpose? We have twenty-two acres here. We also have a field in the back. I, I can't guess how big it is, but I will tell you, it's the size of a couple of football fields. The placement of a one-story building on, on that field might be possible, but I don't understand the necessity of putting a seventy-foot building in somebody's backyard. If you were talking about putting it on, on a location on one forty, where it was contemplated and acceptable twelve years ago, then I would understand something. It's acceptable on Route one forty. This isn't my backyard and approximately fifty other houses in the area. Seventy feet in the air. And to say that it doesn't conflict with the neighborhood or that it's, we're going to reduce the setback and it's not going to be inconvenient to the houses which are approximately fifty feet away right now, I think is ludicrous. Again, I'm not going to change anybody's mind here, but I would ask you to consider that in the, the town is asking you to approve their, their school, three, uh, seventy feet in the air. I would like you to have some consideration for the residents who live in that area. Excuse me, I'm not done yet, please. You mentioned the number of square foot feet of this building. Could you repeat that again? It was in, in, I think it was in the planning board. I thought you said a hundred and something.
A hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet.
And the current building that's there, does anybody know what that is?
Sixty-seven thousand.
Sixty-seven thousand. What's the increase in students?
Uh, we're adding a, a third more, growing.
I, I understand, but the number of students, please.
It's about three hundred and thirty.
I'm sorry, let's start from the capacity of the new school?
Nine hundred and eighty-five.
Then I would tell you that the current school was built for nine hundred students. Okay? They want to increase it, increase it by eighty-five. There are currently six hundred students in that school. That means there are three hundred vacant spaces in that school. Now, again, I understand, I am not going to overcome the town of Milford in creating this monstrosity in my front yard, but I am going to tell you, those are the facts. All right? Nobody has established a need to build this school there. Nobody has established a need for the school. They are asking you for a variance of setback and height. Somebody tell me why? Why do we need to, the variance of setback and height? We have twenty-two acres on which to build a school. If it has to go there and somebody wants to invest sixty million dollars for eighty-five students, I guess I'm not going to convince you otherwise, but please tell me why it has to go seventy feet in the air. I understand what the lady said, but it does not make sense to me on twenty-two acres. Thank you.
Great. Yes, ma'am, can you stand, then please, uh, tell me your name?
Carla Hippolito, and I live on Cypress Road. From what I can see there, that's going to be my front door. I understand we need a new school. I have a little one, but I understand, but what are you going to do for noise? As it is right now, the school is quite a waste for me because the field is in front of me. I hear delivery trucks, I hear trash trucks. I've even joked with my kids and said, "Oh, don't even have lunch at school. Come home." What are you going to do for a barrier? What is that going to do when I come out of my house and I have a sixty-whatever-foot building in my front yard, literally?
Anybody else?
Is anybody taking consideration to people on that street?
I'm Elizabeth Cole, and I'm with Cypress Road is down from her on three Cypress Road. And we bought the house because it was once. And now those ones are going to be gone. There's going to be a seventy-foot house, building there. Um, and that, that, the, the field used to be there, and you had, when there was activities in the field, there was cars all on the street, and all the, because the traffic was not going to be for people dropping their children off because it's on the other side of the road. But I know now, there's people that just drive their kids to the edge of the field and not to walk across the field. So I'm thinking that if the building is there, that they're going to be using Cypress Road to the dead end street, and, and there's a bus stop right out at the, uh, Fernand, which there's like at least thirty-five children standing there waiting for the bus. So I believe that it's going to impact that area a little bit much. And that there's going to be now a playing field right next door to my house, um, on the right. I don't know if I can see it, but it says it's going to be there. So besides the building now, the playing field is right there. There's a walkway now that is paved, that's right on my property, and the children right now drive their bikes over my property and they, um, walk on my property now. And I'm not sure what we're going to do with that walkway, if it's going to continue or if it's going to stop, or, uh, I'm very concerned with this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else care to be heard?
Yeah, I'm living in the backyard of the school, uh, just living in my backyard.
What street?
Um, it's, uh, Sandic.
Sandic Road?
Yeah, and, uh, I agree with, uh, you know, people because that is, have a big impact on the neighborhood. There's a big deal for us, it's not just the, the office. And, uh, I think this gentleman did his homework, there are three hundred students there. What was the point in building this school? Right now, the budget is tight everywhere. We see the, you know, the tax interface. So why we have to build that?
Okay, thank you. Uh, sure, can you tell, give us your name, please?
So, it's, uh, it's my wife. I live in the backyard of the school. Whenever, every morning, I drive in my car to the work, there are a lot of traffic jams in, in the road because the kids take the kids, drive the kids into the school. The school bus work on the, uh, the Congress Street to the North One Street. So that's why every morning, there will be traffic jams. Being on the current number of the students, six hundred students in the school, will you, you, if you increase the, the building, uh, before the increase of students number from the six hundred into the eighteen thousand, sixty hundred, that part of the traffic is going to be bad, in the morning or afternoon. So you cannot drive through that traffic.
Okay.
So that's why we get, every morning, I scan there, maybe fifteen to twenty minutes. Otherwise, we cannot leave there after we build the building there. The same thing about right now, and we have six hundred students, but the, you think about the, uh, 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 kind, the kids of, of the class in the back hall. That's why usually they have a basketball field. The, right now, they live with the basketball field because we want the kids to be there, the parking, uh, space for the, for the students. You think about increasing the, the students from six hundred into fifteen hundred. So the, how, the kids in, after the class, so they have no space there. So another thing is that you have to have a, a lot of, for example, the basketball field and the football field and all the parking space. That's why after there, we cannot, so that's our noise, influence all the neighborhood crowds around the schools.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any board member I'd like to be heard? Yes, sir.
I'm, uh, Richard Klein, I'm at thirteen North Line Street. I tend to wonder whether they need the school also, but, and I had no idea that it was going to be three stories, seventy feet high. I presume there's like no state money to just rehab the old one, is the way I was thinking of it. So as soon as I heard that they were looking at both the plans of rehabbing the old one and seeing whether they'd build a new one, that it was just about guaranteed that the idea would be, oh, yeah, we're going to scrap the old one and build a new one. I'm fairly happy with the fact that where the building is being put is so much further away from my house on, on Mind Street, pushing it back to irritating other neighbors. But I have a question of what this dotted line going around the outside part of this map, if that's the setback, how big is that setback now?
Can you answer that?
Uh, sure, and I'm glad to answer some of the other questions that came up as well. This is the, this buffer, this line that the gentleman was talking about indicates, is, is indicating a hundred-foot buffer from the property line. So the building is set back a hundred feet from any property line. Uh, there are areas where play space, um, some, uh, play structures and some parking extend into that buffer zone, and that's what the variance is about. The building is a hundred feet from any property line. Uh, in terms of the, the traffic, a big part of our planning has been having ease the traffic on North Bond Street because it is a terrible mess. We're providing much more, uh, uh, drive space within the property so we can get that parking off of North Line, uh, get the, uh, the traffic off of North Line and into the, uh, space so that North Line Street can be, uh, can flow more easily. In terms of the number of students, um, it's, the building is growing from the, the student population is growing to, uh, nine hundred and eighty-five students, not, uh, maybe fifteen hundred, nine hundred and eighty-five students. Um, there was a significant study of all other options for the project, either on other sites in Milford or, uh, other locations within the site, and in fact, looking at the, uh, possible reuse of the existing building. Uh, the reuse of the existing building proved to be more expensive than building a new building and not as educationally sound. And that's something that, the analysis was required by the state. Uh, they do not allow, uh, frivolous use of their money and determine that building a new building was the most cost-effective way and educationally sound way to house the existing building on the site. This is part of a long-range plan that's been in place, an educational plan that's developed, uh, fifteen years, to consolidate the number of buildings within the school so that children won't have to make as many transitions, so the school is not operating as many buildings. Uh, the existing building really had, lived out of its useful life, it was no longer educational appropriate, and did not house, uh, nine hundred students. The children were jammed, the six hundred students are jammed into that building. Uh, it's very tight. They, there are, there are, um, currently, uh, portables, uh, modular buildings that are being used as temporary buildings because they don't fit inside existing buildings. So it really does not house the student population until now, let alone the, the increase when we add the third grade.
Okay, um, I'd like to try and keep this, you know, right now limited to what you're here for. Um, and I want to ask a couple of questions because usually when I sit down and I take a look at a site plan, I take care of, a look at an elevation, uh, layout or topo, I'm seeing a pre-existing and I'm seeing, I'm seeing an existing, an existing conditions concept showing how many parking spaces are currently here, where it was laid out, and then what you're going to. I don't see any parking of where you're coming from and now what the new site is going to relate to, along with the existing building of where it was and the height of that versus now going down, and I see a color rendering down there that, that looks like a massive hotel. Um, and that's, is that the color, is that the rendering showing the approximate height of what you're dealing with right now?
Uh, that's the rendering you, uh, there's also, I think you have in your package...
I have this, this...
...schedule shows.
And can you give us, show us, put it on the board of what this is?
Sure.
For everybody?
What we're looking at here, uh, is showing the various heights, uh, of the building. So that the, the sixty feet is the peak of the roof, the absolute peak of the roof. That's the highest point of the roof up here. The E line, which is down here, at the top of the, the, uh, the three stories, is I believe, uh, it's about, uh, it's, uh, I think it's fifteen, forty-eight feet. So you're really, the sixty-foot is the peak of the roof at the center of the building. Is that, so there's a sloped roof, the sixty-foot is at the peak of the roof. And then there would be, um, some pieces of skylights that would stick up, that might stick up beyond that.
One, two, three.
One, two, three skylights, that's correct. Does that help you?
Yeah, well, that, that, that's kind of one of them, and I, and I don't want to interrupt any, anything that the public wants to do, but I'm trying to wrap my hands around this the best I can. And as I indicated, um, and I, and I know by the time this meeting is, this hearing is over tonight, I'm probably not going to be comfortable to do, to react on this. I need a lot more information. Clearly, one of them being that I need to see a pre-existing site plan of what the current parking is on the site. Then I'm going to want to see a site plan showing the current parking strategy of what you're trying to do for the new facility, and if that has increased or has decreased. Because clearly, you know, based on everything in the history we have in here, there is peak times where school buses, parents, it's, uh, it's a nightmare up there trying to get in and get out of that site. I realize that. I also realize the challenge that this particular school has seen its years. I take a look at something like this, and I got to get my head around what makes it that high and why does it need to be that high? I mean, I'm talking, I'm looking at eight-foot high, looks like skylight areas on a, on the top of that, and is that something you can do without?
Uh, skylights...
What is going to be up in that area?
Uh, in the roof area, there'll be mechanical equipment, uh, within the, within that roof. That's why the roof is sloped, to have mechanical equipment inside to protect the mechanical equipment. And that is the, the, the high ridge line. The skylights, it's a three-story high building, it's very important for education to have natural light through the building, so we need to have skylights bring natural light down through all three floors of the building, so that's an integral part of the...
Have you talked about just eliminating that? You've got lights on all walls, uh, you know, on both sides. Is that, that a necessity?
Yes, the, the, um, we can go through the, the educational plan and the layout of the building. There's a, a large central area that is called the Learning Commons, where there's project areas for the children to, to do large activities within. So the skylights bring natural light down into that area. Um, we, we did go into that because we were looking, obviously we're limited to the variances on the, on the hundred-foot buffer and the, and the height.
All right, so, so, and I'm not trying to control, you know, the aspect of this, but how many parking spaces did you have before? And how many parking spaces are you going to have with the new building?
There are about a hundred and twenty parking spaces now, I believe.
Yeah, next, yes, two hundred.
And there'll be over two hundred.
Over two hundred.
Yeah. And we have a, a, a traffic engineer working with us now, who's, who'll focus on our initial planning and is still, uh, uh, developing, uh, developing it further. But there will be over two hundred parking spaces, there'll be a central loop that will allow the, the buses to have a separate, uh, bus drop-off area. Parents will have a, there'll be one drop-off area, one loop for the, for the buses, and a second loop for the parents, so that, uh, the traffic will flow more, more smoothly. We're providing more, uh, space off of North Line Street so that more cars can be on the site at a given time to get, to reduce the amount of traffic that sits on North Line Street. So we think this will be a significant improvement, even with the additional cars. Uh, we will be, we will be, um, bringing that, those cars and moving those cars through the site more, more fluidly, uh, to reduce that traffic. That's been a major consideration, a major concern for, uh, the school building. That's been a major consideration, a major concern for, uh, the school building committee and discussions. We've had extensive, extended discussions with.
Hey. Okay, great, thank you.
Director.
Yes. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Shirley Nero. I live at seven North Line Street. Every vehicle that approaches that school in or out goes by my house. I moved there nineteen sixty-nine in Park Road. It was all around, so my life has really, really changed. I was on the school building, uh, the previous school building. That building was designed for eight hundred slash nine hundred students. That's because it was kindergarten through five and they had top days in kindergarten. So eight hundred students at one time. The reason it's overcrowded is because the school department decided to redistribute the grades. So had they left it K through five, we would have no crowded. That being said, I made them build that little extra parking lot in the back because I told them you didn't have enough parking. Those traffic engineers told me I wouldn't even know that there was a school there. Well, I know it. Now, I'm gonna bring up two points that I don't know if anybody knows. You cannot have one more toilet flushing on North Line Street sewer line. A developer in the back was allowed not to put a sewer pump. I think that's what they call it. He, he had nice connections with the town, so his development didn't happen. At approximately nine North Line Street to my house, it plateaus. There is not enough gravity here. It barely makes it now. If you're gonna add that many students, we're all gonna have a problem. So you're gonna have to fix that and don't listen to the sewer department. Only the workmen know about it. Secondly, the drainage of that building goes to the groves. The groves used to be South Brook Apartment Club, but on Center Row. Pipes that are on your plans, the town plan stamped by an engineer have a diameter of, of so many gallons per minute or whatever the, the calculation is. The physical pipe that was put in that ground is half the size. I brought that up at our school committee, school building committee meeting of the previous Woodland School. I was laughed at because they said an engineer stamped it. Then the water bubbled up on Center Row into the apartments, up to the ceiling. Those pipes are still undersized. I don't know what you're gonna do about it.
Excuse me, excuse me, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut you off.
I know it's hard to care, I don't know how to approach the people.
I think what you.
Because we do not have any meetings for the neighborhood to tell them the issues.
Okay, and, and this is why you are here tonight. We, we, as a zoning board, I have to deal with the special permit issue.
I understand that.
If there is a sewer issue, if there is a water issue, and if there's a traffic issue, then I suggest that someone gets a petition together and, and if a sewer issue, to get to the sewer department.
I just wanna know one question. Why are the abuddies never invited to public meetings at the planning board or whenever these decisions are made before it gets to this stage?
Yes, exactly. How I see this without even knowing, this is the first time I get this letter. Already have planned there. And also talk about skylight. How many schools have skylights? Think about that. What's the.
Well, we're not here to discuss skylights. We are here to discuss heights, okay?
The point is, the point is this time we can afford something, you know, that expensive. You, that's, you talk about, you know, taxpayers' money.
I, I'd like to, and before I, I go back and, and we may have to continue this hearing, but I'd like to get some comments from the zoning board members. And then once we do that, we'll back, open it up to you. I'd like to get some of the board members to see what their feelings are as well. Go.
Yeah, one of the things that's hitting me, when you were developing it, obviously, there's always gonna be winners and losers in any kind of place of property. I mean, you get the zoning board because, you know, God doesn't make anymore properties. That's why you're here. What was the thought given to how this would affect the neighborhood? Obviously, you had some pluses and some minuses. Why did you end up here? I mean, I know you talk about wetlands. When I look at it, it's a complete movement of the entire facility from where it is down to the, um, to the cul-de-sac, like groves there, right? So I'm just saying, when you were planning this, what were your thoughts about? Were you figuring you're gonna be at a meeting like this, seeing these objections? And what were your thoughts about that?
Uh, we, we looked very extensively at how to put the building on the site and different options for putting the building on the site. Uh, we basically had three broad approaches to it. One is to, uh, could we put it on top of where the existing building is? That is move the kids somehow, knock down the school and, and put the kids, or the, build the new building and move the children back in. There was no place in town to relocate the kids for that period of time. We looked at additions and renovations. Could we, could we, um, 'cause the, the building will be larger. Could we build part of it, move the kids into that part, knock down the existing building and, and, uh, move the kids and then build the, the second part of it? So that would've been a long, phased process. It would've had significant impact on the children. Would've been, there would've been continuous safety concerns, having the construction adjacent to the existing school. Uh, and it proved to be much more expensive because of the, of the, of the phase and, uh, process. So, uh, so that was two different options. Knocking down a building or building, uh, adjacent to it and trying to use the existing building as much as we could. A third option was to try and build in this area along North Line Street. And as the outline of the wetlands became finalized through, uh, ongoing meetings with the Conservation Commission, there simply was not enough physical space, uh, along North Line to, to build it. That would be in the wooded area, uh, right adjacent to North Line Street. So that simply did not have any physical, any physical footprint area. So what that left us was the existing field or the, I shouldn't say what left us. The other piece that we were exploring was the existing large ball field. And that really ultimately became the only place where a footprint could fit. And that is only a, at three stories. We, we looked at doing the two-story building, a two-story building would've, uh, impacted the neighbors more. Would've been right, uh, we would've been outside of that buffer area. We would've been much closer. We would've used up the entire site, uh, to, to try and put it in two stories. So the, the three-story building only fits on that part of the site. And it's three stories to allow the, um, appropriate play space for the children, to allow the required, um, loop for an emergency vehicle to get around the building and to provide a buffer between the building and the neighbors. We have a hundred, we have a hundred feet to provide buffers with, with landscaping so that, uh, there will be visual barriers between the neighbors and the school. We think that's, um, that's very appropriate. The, the Cypress Street, uh, there's no, there's no, uh, there's only one building, uh, that, that's right on the street. The rest of Cypress Street is a, is an additional buffer between houses and the, um, and the school. So we are providing a buffer and there will be a visual buffer between the, and the neighbors and school. So I think it's, uh, the, the site with the wetlands provided, created a number of constraints for us, but I think the solution will be a, a good solution. And I think it'll, that there'll be plenty of space for buffers for, for the neighbors.
Just, uh, one more question. Was there any attempt to bring the neighbors along during this whole planning session?
We had, uh, two public meetings, uh, which, which have been publicly.
We were not notified.
Now, public meetings.
All right, please, please.
I'm David Craywitz. I'm the project manager. I work with Laura and Aldo. Every school building committee meeting, which is at least once per month, is a public meeting. Publics invited. We did very much advertise the public forums. I'm a Milford resident. I'm sorry, certain people didn't hear, but they were advertised through the school department and through local outlets.
But, but, and I wanna, I wanna clarify because, you know, when you, when you hold a, a zoning board hearing, the abuddies have a mailing list that were notified and that's probably why some of them are here tonight. Did you utilize this miss, list? Thank you. Anybody else, uh, board member?
I'll sit.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I've, uh, I'd like to see something that shows, I guess this is a, uh, topographical map which, uh, excuse me, uh, shows the existing Woodland School. I don't see the comparable thing for the proposed school. Unless it's, yeah.
I outlined it up there, Tom.
This doesn't really tell me a lot. I can distinguish a parking lot, but beyond that, I can't distinguish what these rectangles are, what these are. Is this where the proposed school is gonna go?
Yeah, this is the, this is the same thing that you have in your hand. This is the outline of the existing building. I mean, I'm sorry, the proposed building in the dark, the dark gray.
Uh-huh.
There's, um, here, this is North Line Street. This is the, the drive coming in. This is, the drive is in the same location as the existing drive. There's then two loops. So as you come in, there, there's a, a loop here that will be a buses-only loop and a second loop here that will be for, for cars. And then there's a parking lot, the, the parking for approximately cars in this area. So the parking is here. The parking's very much, uh, where the existing parking is now. It is approximately where the existing, where the new parking will be, but it's, it's enlarged.
Excuse me.
So this is the, this is the parking area here. Uh, there'll be a, um, a, a loop road, an emergency vehicle loop road that goes around the, the building. There are discreet place, uh, areas for play structures, uh, adjacent to the building behind it. There's one small, uh, field, play field here. And then there's a larger, uh, soccer field on the North Line end of the, of the building. So you have two, two play space, two large play fields, the large park, the large parking area, the loop road for buses. This is the school here with some small play structures scattered around the building.
Can you point out on there where the existing school is today, just so that?
The existing school is right here.
Okay.
The existing parking is right here.
Okay.
There's a fine line, if you look at your drawings, you'll see there's a very fine line.
It's not that, it's not that clear on the plan.
Yeah, I know, I thought it was on that one.
Yeah, there's, we're, we're still in preliminary design phases. We're in the schematic design phase now.
Have you done ground engineering on the site for the pre-existing condition of currently right now?
Yes.
There's still only one egress, intrinsic egress.
At, at this time, we have, we're showing one, um, egress, ingress and egress here. We're looking at other possibilities for ingress.
That's a big problem.
Excuse me, do I have, um, Gary?
Okay, um, this, if I recall, ten years ago, this was a project that, was it ten years ago, maybe? A little longer than that. Uh, that, this was the same plan that was thought about is that they would build a school and the new school in the back and they would tear down the one in the front, if I, if I recall. I mean, maybe it was a few years longer than that, a year or two less.
Yeah, about two thousand and six.
Because I believe the idea was even back then was to close Middle School East.
That's right.
And instead of being a single school there and then that school has some drawbacks, was to make this configuration three, four, and five and then make Stacy Middle School six, seven, and eight. So moving eighth grade down. So this isn't something that's brand new, if I, memory serves me, but this is something that's been in the works for, for a lot of years. And I can tell you firsthand that that school, there's not an inch of space anywhere. You're gonna put another whole grade up there. So is it something we need? Absolutely. And I, I think that, um, you know, getting the traffic off of North Line Street is a real plus too because there are certain hours of the day that sometime, you know, you, you can't get by 'cause if there's a traffic car coming the other way, 'cause they, they're even on both sides of the street. So I think this will help significantly with the traffic. Plus, um, I think, um, the fact that, what, what's the reimbursement the state's giving?
Fifty-nine point.
Fifty-nine?
Yeah, more likely, it'll be more like fifty percent because of the exclusionary.
Okay, so.
Over fifty percent.
Okay, so fifty cents on the dollar. Okay.
John?
No, I'm all set.
Mark?
Current school was built in nineteen seventy-seven, correct? Basically, we gotta catch twenty-two here, don't we? Well, we can't, you've explored alternative sites, Gonzo. You've gotta go with the state and what they want. You're getting fifty cents back on the dollar. You can't knock down the building that's there 'cause it was built in seventy-seven. You got lead paint laws after seventy-eight. So there's probably some issues. I'm not sure about that, but basically, some of the neighbors are saying, let's renovate it, let's do this. Well, there are lead paint laws prior to seventy-eight. Regarding any type renovation, that's, it really has no bearing with this. I'm just trying to say this, that renovating this, this particular school is not gonna work, correct?
Yes, but not for that reason.
No, I'm not, I didn't say it was for that reason. I'm just saying it won't work.
It won't.
It won't work. So you have to go three floors on the current site that you have. Alternate placement of all these children has already been explored and is not feasible.
That's correct.
So the only way we can do this, for what I'm being told here, and I understand, is to knock down this building side by each, pretty much, right? Side by each. Side by each.
Build a new school, then knock down the old one.
Right. The children in this town, there's not gonna be less children being educated. There's certainly gonna, it's gonna grow. Now, then the largest capacity of the school's gonna be?
Nine hundred and, uh, nine eighty-five. It'll hold more. It'll hold more and we're not looking to put more in there, but as you've said, we can't tell you what's gonna happen in five to ten years.
No, I, I agree.
How many, uh, floors of classrooms and offices?
It's a total of three stories.
There'll be classrooms on the, on the third floor?
Yes, yeah. So there's, the third, the third grade is on the first floor, the fourth grade is on the second floor, and the fifth grade is on the third floor.
All right, can I ask you, can I ask you a question concerning that, to follow that up? This is, this soccer field on the right-hand side?
The little one?
Yes. Why can that be eliminated, eliminated? What are you gonna do with the, is it the, the old school?
The old school is getting knocked down.
What are you gonna utilize there?
That'll become a, a big, a big, this is a full-size soccer field here.
So why, why, why couldn't we go down the, and I'm, maybe you've, you've already gone down this road, but to eliminate that type of height, eliminate this small soccer field to at least reduce the height a bit?
That, that isn't enough. It's simply not enough.
It's not enough.
You need an, an area at least this large on the site.
Have you done, are you replicating, are you replicating any wetlands over here?
Yes.
The fact is, this footprint represents one grade. If you, they don't wanna split a grade into two floors. So if you made it two floors, then you'd have to double this area on the site, have two grades on one floor. Never.
It just simply doesn't fit.
This is, the grade, each grade has fifteen classrooms plus three, so that eighteen, nine, nine hundred.
What is the question, question? What's the existing footprint?
About sixty-seven thousand. Sixty-seven. This will be sixty-three.
Sixty-seven thousand square feet is the existing building.
And this one's actually small.
On, on one floor, that's right.
One floor. What is the footprint for this building?
Sixty-three thousand.
Huh?
About sixty-three thousand.
Are you talking about footage of the footprint?
I wanna know the footprint, right. I don't wanna know.
About sixty-three thousand square feet.
It's smaller than the.
On one, but.
That's one floor.
Times, times three.
It's not fully three stories. Parts of it are one-story, parts of it are two.
The gym is only one-story.
This is one story. This is two stories. This is three stories. It's not all three stories. Only the middle, the classrooms.
Why wouldn't you go two stories over the gym and cut that, cut that height down a bit? Have you, have you looked at that?
The gym is double height to begin with. So although it's, it's one story, its volume is two. If you put something above it, you're three stories again. I mean, you have to throw basketballs.
Could you put the mechanicals on that to bring that roofline down for the entire building?
In theory, you could, you could bring the roofline down.
You know, they're trying to put it where you can go down.
I, I only wanna address the height in the, in the special permit right now. We've addressed traffic and stuff, if that's what you'd like to. I just, I don't wanna double our efforts and continue to talk about something that we've already talked about.
About the two things, uh, the presenter, about the, one is about tear down the old building. Build the new building is cost less. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me. Second thing about the, right now, the traffic is on the street, North Line Street, Congress Street is another intersection, section. But all, how many you do inside of the, the school, gather in pool, the traffic. But all, how many you do inside of the, the school, gotta improve the traffic on the public street. Especially the current, the pub, parking, the space only one hundred twenty, uh, the pub, uh, spot. In the future, you have the double, the two hundred is on, you told me, right? Two hundred parking lot. So that means that only the teacher, the, the car, the double the traffic. So it, it is, it just, it taught me that in the new building, you gotta improve the traffic.
That's not possible.
That's not possible, improve the traffic on the whole size.
But we're not, we're, we're not here to talk about the traffic. It's just not our job, I'm sorry. We're, we're talking about the variance that they're requesting.
I have a, I have a quick question. There is a property adjacent to it. Have you given any consideration to acquiring that? The corner of North Vine Street and Congress Street. We, the town does not own that.
Uh, not that I know of.
Why not?
Uh, I don't know that it's, it's never presented as an option.
It's, it's, it, it would be a solution to have at least a two-story building, acquire the whole corner and spread out that building. And you need a second road there.
Isn't that what you're talking about?
Yes.
This is all wet. This is all wet.
We can't do it.
It's not billable.
What about the corner? Goes all the way to Congress.
Show the wet.
The wetlands are all...
Do you want me to show you where that, where I'm talking?
That's fine, but this, this area is all wet.
I'm not talking about that area.
We can't build in here.
I'm not talking about that.
Show us where you're talking.
This is North Vine. Goes to Congress. This is Congress. Why can't you acquire this? This triangle was owned by somebody. Why can't we acquire it by eminent domain? Stretch this out. One, and you're, 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 uh, increasing the student population and you're increasing the parking. You're back where you started from. You do need another egress exit, whatever you wanna call it.
What's that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to correct the record if I might without trying to insult anybody. We can't rehab the building. We do recognize this is one of our youngest buildings. It has been assessed twice for, uh, uh, issues relating to, uh, defects in the building. Each time, they have been, we have spent millions of dollars to repair those. To say we can't rehab a building appears to be nonsense to me. Again, would you please put up that, uh...
Existing?
I don't wanna call it a monstrosity, it would probably be too offensive to you. That in a residential neighborhood. Please, do you understand that? In a residential neighborhood, would any of you want it in your neighborhood? I understand the need for a school, but I'll address that in a moment. Would you want that? Doesn't that belong at the town park? Something like that, like the Stacy School complex? Does that belong in the neighborhood? It's seen its years, you commented. It's the youngest, one of the youngest schools. The only other younger school is the one down the street on Congress Street, and there's like a two or three-year difference. We're, we're not talking about the Milford High School, which is much older. We're not talking about the St. Mary's School, which is a hundred years old. We're not talking about the Stacy School Complex, a hundred years old. This is a thirty-year-old building, and we're saying we have to take it down so we can build three stories, seventy feet high on twenty-two acres. Would you give me the, uh, one that reflects the twenty-two acres, please? Again, never been to a meeting, never been invited to a meeting, never anything other than this was dropped on us, okay? Please understand this, a little preparation, just viewing. The soccer field is the length of a football field. Now, my math, I went to parochial school, is one hundred feet wide, possibly two hundred feet wide by three hundred feet. That's four hundred thousand square feet. We need how much square feet, excuse me?
One hundred and thirty-two.
Uh-huh, excuse me?
One hundred and thirty-two.
Two thousand square? It works out that you could put a single-story building in the soccer field, all of the area, and as Mrs. Nero just pointed out, there are another five or six acres, and they said it's wetland. Well, I've lived up there since they built that school. They filled in that. It was all wetland. They filled it in to build a current school. So please don't use it as an excuse, because it can be bypassed and filled in. It was filled in. It was a pond. They built the school on a pond. You can't tell me you can't take that corner piece and fill it in, build a one-story school that fits into a neighborhood. That is a monstrosity in a residential neighborhood. And again, I'm not gonna change anybody's mind here to vote against the people that appoint you, but I am gonna tell you, don't do that to the neighborhood. Nobody would want, that's like building the shopping center in Natick in my backyard, unnecessarily. If it was impossible, then I would say, everybody's gotta compromise. It is not impossible. If you do not give them the variance, I will guarantee you they'll be back with an alternate plan, because it fits on that property. I don't want it there, but I'm willing to have it there. A one-story building, whatever. But it doesn't have to be that monstrosity in a residential neighborhood.
Can I just talk to minor points back?
Excuse me, sir.
Let him talk.
We talked about, you know, lady mentioned here that there are, there's, the school is stuck. Let's go back to the original construction. Woodland School was constructed for nine hundred students. We can't change that and say it's crowded. It's crowded because it's absolutely mismanaged, and it has been for many years. And if you find that offensive or whatever, I'm telling you, it was, we applied to the state of Massachusetts for a nine hundred student school. The current, uh, staffing in that school is six hundred. That's three hundred vacant spaces. I understand exactly what you're telling me, because I've been in the school a number of times, but let's deal with the facts. The facts are, there are three hundred vacant spaces in the current Woodland School.
I, I gotta, I gotta stop you, because if you, if we're not related to the height question...
Sir, it's all got to do with the height.
I, we're dealing with the height and the special permit of the height. The population, those questions have been answered, the increase of students have been answered, we've talked about the traffic in the parking lots. What else would you like to talk about?
I would like to tell you, the current school handles nine hundred students. They wanna put eighty-five more up. Do you need to go up?
We already discussed that.
Do you need to go up three stories to put eighty?
We already discussed that. We already talked about this.
Yes, I, I, I'm just, I wanna reinforce the point that you don't have to go up three stories and put eighty-five more students in there, excuse me. You could also create an L-shaped building, so that it doesn't have to go from left to right, but you can better utilize the space so you can keep the height down. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
So, um, if you're going forward and you have to organize meeting in this neighborhood, that's fifty of us. I, I didn't get any information of that, that's, you know, for this meeting. I believe my neighborhood also, not everybody knows, that fifty of us, fifteen.
Yeah, I understand.
Not everyone has been notified.
Um, with that, um, do you have the last word before we take you, take it under advisement?
May I? A couple minor points of fact. Um, a hundred times three hundred is thirty thousand, not three hundred thousand. I ran it on my calculator, cause I wanna be sure. Um, there's no possible way it, it fits there, um, at least in this configuration. The state is, as Laura said earlier, is not frivolous with their funds. They are fiduciaries to the taxpayers of the state, and they watch their money extremely closely. They run very tight metrics on schools. And by their understanding of how a current school should be like, the existing Woodland School is considerably undersized for its current population. So it's, even if you didn't add a grade, they would consider the facilities inadequate on metrics alone, let alone the configuration of the school doesn't meet the current educational model whatsoever. Technically, there's no question we could rehab the existing building. It just wouldn't be a good school, but it would leak and it would have boilers and such. Um, the state believes that the size we're providing is actually slightly under the standard guidelines for what's needed, not over in any way. They're very, very strict in monitoring this, it will not allow us an extra square foot. Plus, it's a large school, it asks us to be more efficient than usual rather than less. So we originally started this project, we thought we would have over a hundred forty thousand square feet, and we've cut that to the smallest number possible. It's an extremely efficient design. I just wanted, with that, I think we really have looked at every option possible on the site. I am sorry that members of this group have not given the meaning, but again, every school building committee, meeting is public, and please make yourselves, you know, invite yourselves to those meetings. We discuss these designs at every single meeting. No aspect of this project has not been presented. And we have had two public forums, and we'll work to make sure that this particular group is included, though of course. But we believe that this is the, not just the best, but really the only ad best way to position the building on the site and to meet the current educational needs put forth by the public schools.
Yeah, what, I, furthermore, um, for the clarity of the people that live in this neighborhood, I'd like the same format that these residents get notified and mailed by certified, somewhat to the list that they've been notified by this hearing. That way there, we wouldn't have had as much conflict as we've had tonight, that we're addressing issues that they never had an opportunity to, maybe because they work out of town, maybe because they didn't see the newspaper for the public hearing, but clearly people were notified by the abbot's list of a major product in front of them. I think that should be utilized by your firm going forward, so these residents clearly know on a daily basis what is going on. I think that's paramount for the neighborhood. Um, it's a big impact for them. And with that, I'll leave the last word to you before I close the hearing and take it under advisement.
Uh, I don't think there's too much more to say. This is a very significant project for the, for the town. It has been, um, very highly reviewed by the state, it follows their guidelines, we can only believe it follows their guidelines. As David said, we look at innumerable options on the site, and I think that this is the, really the only way to make the state guidelines sit on this.
Great, thank you. Hearing is closed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us about what happened now, Ron, and all of these that appeared this evening?
Yes, if, if, if it is voted in favor or denied, if it's denied, it's denied. If it's, if it, if it's voted on tonight, there's a twenty-day appeal period for someone to make an appeal decision. So you have twenty days to appeal that decision, it's voted in.
Any discussion about this issue? How much you want?
Yes, yeah, we'll be voting at the end of the meeting tonight. We will be voting on what their special permit is.
All right, but is it just a vote, or is there a discussion?
I know, but...
No, it's, the hearing is now closed. You have it, once the decision is made, there is a twenty-day appeal period that you can file as residents or without you on a decision. Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, can you, uh, please clear out the room? We have to conduct business. Thank you. We appreciate it.
May I ask a question? I had given a piece of incorrect information. I read through my notes. The size of the sign was incorrect. Can I ask for any minutes or twenty-four? If not, it will be three and a half feet is a foot by fifteen inches. That's a very small sign. You would have...
The fact that it's smaller, I don't think, you don't have to. It's smaller. If you were going saying bigger, but it's small, you can't, you, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, they need to stop talking and leave here so we can get home.
Excuse me, can, can everybody take...
Can you take that outside, please?
...so we can conduct the meeting?
Good evening, Mr. Chaking.
Thank you. Yeah, why don't, why don't we do this now, so we can get, we can get, um, the board member back on?
All right, where is, uh, where did Mark?
He's in the bathroom.
Oh.
All right, well, let's...
Okay, we're, we're...
Let's read.
Wait a minute.
Let me go down the road and see if you have...
He's on this, Mark's on this one, correct, yeah.
Mark was on this one, correct?
Uh-huh.
All right, let's do the, um, Green Street Auto. We'll do the Green Street Auto. Uh, Joe, he was on that. All right, I get this open. Okay, um, this is on the application of the Green Street Auto, um, concerning, uh, this was the signage aspect, uh, this was the, currently on the conditions, I, I, I'm suggesting no oil changes or detail allowed in the parking lot. Uh, all services conducted would be inside the building.
And this is what, run with the applicant?
And, um...
But he owns it.
Well, the car wash is kind of, we can put it on with the applicant, and then we'll come back for special permits later.
Okay, I, I don't have any problem with it.
No problem.
All right, we got a motion from Mary, seconded by...
I second.
John. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, unanimous. Which one's that? Okay. Mark it back, good.
Yeah.
Let's go right to the, um, Woodland School. On the panel was, uh, myself, Mary, Joe, John, and Mark. Uh, what's the pleasure?
I'm, I'm fine.
Do I have a motion as submitted?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
By Mary, seconded by John? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That's submitted. I just hope that, uh, and that they, uh, continue to notify the abbot so that they can be a part of the process.
I just want a copy. I gave you my copy, I'll get that after.
You know, Mr. Chairman, this isn't the first night that these residents have heard of this school.
Okay.
And it's out of our jurisdiction to rebuild this building.
Okay, I got you. All right, the next one is, what is this, Cornerstone? Wait on Cornerstone. Let's go to Fri-, uh, what do you, what's the pleasure on the board for Fridays?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, no problem at all.
Trying to, um, look at the sheet. Okay, uh, do I have a motion? Motion by John? Motion by John, seconded by, oh, second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, Cornerstone. Let's go to Cornerstone on the signage. Uh, Brian, you were on this one, John, John, Joe, and, uh, Mary.
Okay.
Um, any comments?
I don't have many.
I don't see any, Paul, Mr. Chairman, I think the sign is tastefully designed. Um, it was mentioned that there's an eighty-foot sign across the street at a restaurant. I have no problem with this, I'm in favor of this.
We have a motion by John, it's second.
Second.
Second by Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's, uh, that's unanimous, as submitted. Was there a site plan with that one? That one I was looking for? That's the one I was looking for.
Nissan.
Milford Nissan. Milford Nissan.
I'd like to see something that limits access to Hamilton. I don't know how they can.
Well, I, I did make notes that, um.
When Imperial used to be there, Mr. Chairman, they used to park vehicles all along Hamilton. So nobody could get into that. I mean, this is gonna be an unsupervised.
Yeah, and I'm, I've.
Parking lot.
That's why I don't like.
Totally unsupervised. So to say you're gonna put up a sign and tell people not to back up. Not to go out a one-way street, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Do something that they can, at least if they have to plow with something, they can.
Either enter and exit from sixteen.
From sixteen?
Not the side streets.
Is that what you want, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll propose that.
Because then it keeps the traffic off the two.
So we have a motion to enter and exit?
Only from Route sixteen.
Only from Route sixteen, which will create some form of chaining along the lot line?
Well, we'll have to do something, because remember, this is gonna be, this, there's not gonna be anyone there managing this at all. So once they park the cars there, you want to make sure the only access they have is to the.
It should be an entrance, a side street entrance, a one-way in, and then maybe a one-way out on Exchange, on Main? You can correct, correct that one?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it should be down a one-way street.
Maybe enter then from what, Free Street, and then, or come in, come in from sixteen and go out? I, I don't know how he's gonna set the cars on the lot, so. And then we have to give him the number of no more than thirty vehicles.
All right, uh, first of all, we've got no more, no more, no more vehicles than thirty, providing it fits with the planning board. Uh, it runs with the applicant. And the biggest issue we have is, um, concern of the Hamilton Street, um, traffic flow. This is one way this way, correct?
Yep, yep. It goes towards Cemetery.
Well, I, I would just have, I would just have, um, maybe, uh, exit only on Free and an enter only from Hamilton.
But you know what, they're gonna go in and out of there.
They're gonna back out and jump on sixteen.
Why do they have to have any access from Hamilton?
You already have curb cuts here on Free.
They gotta put a curb cut from sixteen.
Oh, yeah, you're right, there's no curb cut there. And then it's across the sidewalk.
So do you want, you want to, want to put access to the site is only from East Main Street and Free Street?
Yeah.
And then we can, we can maybe keep this chained?
Yeah, because he's.
Chained, chained with standstill poles?
There shouldn't be, I mean, except for someone stopping by to look, there shouldn't be any, there's not gonna be cars moving off and on that lot, I don't believe.
All right, why don't we, why don't we limit, we're gonna limit, uh.
So access.
Entrance access from East Main to East Main and Free Street only.
No access from Hamilton. No entrance or exit.
No entrance or exit allowed on Hamilton. All, all, they're okay with those conditions?
Yep.
Yep.
So we have a motion by Joe, seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Okay, the next one.
This is my. Yes, for, uh, just a moment. This is for Bay State Alternative Healthcare Ring. Need to leave the board to do this.
Yeah, so I'm gonna need.
You just go sit over there.
Excuse me.
All right.
You got the last hearing?
Yeah, I got it right here. I'm finishing up with it. Okay, and sitting on this one was myself, Joe, John, Brian, and Mark. And any comments? I mean, I can say myself, I like to be consistent with the applicant that came before us last month and have them utilize the whole building. I have serious issues or problems, or I'm really worried about the security. I'd rather see them have the whole building, so I don't really see how I can support this. Anyone else have any comments?
Well, the state doesn't require that they have to have a separate facility.
No, but I'd like to see, for the town of Milford to be consistent so that, I mean, I was in that building. It's wide open when you go in, and then you go upstairs. I just, there's a lot of other people using that building, and maybe they've got all kinds of security, and they're gonna have security guards. I just am worried for the, probably the safety of even other people that aren't even related to this. So I, I, I'd like to be consistent with what we did last month for the other applicant. And I'd like to see, just have, um, that be the only, the only business in the, in the building. And that's my view.
I agree. I think the security planning has laxed. The applicants mentioned that they were gonna spend thirty-five thousand for a security system. You can spend upwards of that for a whole security system. Along with the chairwoman, I agree that this type of business, um, should be in a building exclusive to the business. Not a, a building where the public has access, or the public is in and out of. I'm not crazy about the idea of an elevator being accessible to that floor. And, uh, I, I just can't go in favor of.
Brian?
I agree. I don't think it's an appropriate use for that site. I'd prefer to see this kind of use in a standalone building.
Anything else, Joe? Okay, then, uh.
I agree with, with the board.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to deny this applicant?
I second.
Okay, um, all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
So is she unanimous? Okay. The applicant's been denied.
Okay, and with that, the, uh, the number fourteen zoning board hearing will come to an end. We thank you for joining us, and we'll see you next month.